Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Ms. Powell. How are you?
I'm well, sir. How are you?
Doing well, doing well.
Glad to hear it.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello, Ms. Little.
How you doing, Ms. Elliott?
Doing well, doing well.
Good, great.
Good evening, Ms. Little.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Good.
Good evening, Ms. Little. Mr. Elliott, my name is Joseph Maddox, and this will be my first meeting. Hope all is well and safe this evening.
Good evening, and welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Maddox.
Good evening, Ms. Rollins. How are you this evening?
I'm doing just fine, sir.
Thank you. Hope all is well and safe.
Good evening, all. The hour has arrived for us to commence our February 4, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting for the County of Surrey. And we are so elated to have with us this evening Reverend Eve Butler G., who is the priest in charge of the Martin Brandon Episcopal Church, and this town of Virginia, our neighboring county, and we're so elated to have her to extend to us our invocation tonight. So at this time, Reverend G., would you please bless us with the invocation?
We're gathered tonight at the regular meeting of the Surrey County Board of Supervisors, a practice that has been undertaken for the governments of Surrey County since its creation in 1652, some 369 years ago. This board seeks to positively impact the public safety, health, education, and welfare of the citizens of Surrey County. And in consideration of these heavy responsibilities, it is right and appropriate to seek God's guidance at the beginning of this meeting. Therefore, we pray: Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in the County of Surrey the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. With steadfast purpose, they may faithfully serve in their offices, promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Reverend Butler G., for the invocation. At this time, we're going to ask Ms. Powell if she would give us our opening statement in regards to our virtual meeting in accordance to the governor's orders.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and all those that are here this evening. This meeting is being held electronically due to COVID-19 pandemic, which has made it unsafe to assemble a quorum in a single location. This meeting is being held by go-to meetings as posted on the county's website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Let's give way now to our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Fellow board members, you have before you the agenda for our meeting on tonight. Are there any questions on the agenda? If there's no questions on the agenda, we're asking--
I do-- yes, sir, there is.
Yes.
Yes, sir, I apologize. There is a question on the agenda. The question, sir, is we want to ask tonight if the agenda can be amended to add one item as it pertains to the zoning ordinance as pertains to solar. And Ms. Powell is on the call, but I'm going to ask Mr. Harrison if he can state the case for having us to just request a public hearing.
Okay. Mr. Harrison? Mr. Harrison, you there, sir?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harrison, if you can just state the case for the reason to request the public hearing tonight on the zoning fees for the solar utilities, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Staff respectfully requested the board authorize a public hearing for March 4th meeting consistent with 15.2-107 of the Code of Virginia, as well as with the Surrey County 2018 Solar Ordinance to add a $2,500 solar technical review fee to the planning department's fee structure. This fee will allow for third-party review and consultation for forthcoming solar applications. And as you are well aware, we currently have two pending solar applications being heard by the Planning Commission, as well as several other potential solar facility applications to date.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. That's an amendment, a request for an amendment to the agenda. Ms. Rollins, would that be following in line on the new business under number four, propose additional zoning fees? Is that a part of that?
Yes, sir, that is, but the request is to actually request a public hearing, so we're not going to entertain--
Yes.
--the agenda items. Still, we're going to ask for a public hearing, sir.
Yes, thank you so much. Board members, you've heard the request for the amendment to the agenda. Are there any questions on the amendment or any other items on the agenda tonight? If there be no other questions, Ms. Chapman, could you give us a roll call vote on the adoption of the agenda?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes, if he's available? I don't see him on. Mr. Calhoun? Roll call vote, Mr. Calhoun?
Mr. Calhoun, has he signed on? He advised in a text. He said, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
Yes, thank you. First item that we have before us tonight is the consent items. The draft minutes from our January meeting, January 7, 2021, and our February payable reports, the total of $585,141.33. Are there any questions on the consent items that's presented to us on tonight? If there be no questions on the consent items, could we get a motion from board members to approve the consent items?
Mr. Chairman, Judy Little approved motion, moved that we would approve the consent items that have been presented tonight.
Second, we have a motion. Do we have a second? It's been properly moved and second. Could we get a roll call vote on the consent items for tonight?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Mr. Calhoun advisor, he's on the phone. He's one of the callers. I don't know. We need to make contact with him so we can press on.
Yes, sir.
He advised, yes.
Is there a way that Mr. Calhoun is able to use the chat function to type his vote until someone, Mr. Brown, can reach out to him?
Yeah, we will wait a minute to see if Mr. Brown can contact him so we can get an official vote from him.
This is Tim Calhoun. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. We can hear you now, sir.
Sorry. I have no clue what's going on, but I voted yes in the last roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun.
Thank you.
Board members, the first item that we have on the agenda tonight is for our new business is a 5% match of FEMA grant, funding of a new fire apparatus for Surrey Volunteer Fire Department. Do we have a presentation on that from any staff?
Yes, Mr. Phelps is on, and we will present this item tonight.
Good evening, Chairman of the Board, Board Members, Ms. Little, I mean, Ms. Rollins and citizens of Surrey County. Surrey County has been working diligently with the Surrey Volunteer Fire Department in the replacement of a fire engine. The fire engine that we're looking to replace is dated back from 1990s. The newest one for Surrey County is dated back to 1996. It's a common, it's a practice for fire apparatus, once they've reached the 20 years, to be taken offline as the first due response piece. We've run into where this piece of equipment is starting to cost us a lot, or cost the fire department a lot in repairs. And we have recently submitted a grant application to FEMA for a 500, I think it's roughly $565,000 grant. And it requires a match from the county of approximately 20, I think it's $27,000, $28,000. And what we are seeking for is the commitment from the county to match that percentage of the grant if we're so awarded that grant.
So, Mr. Phelps, the matching of the grant, how much will we be asking from the county?
I believe it's, I don't have that right in front of me, but I believe it's around 20--
28?
20, 28,000?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions from Mr. Phelps on the request for the 5% match of the FEMA grant? If there be no questions, could we have a motion for the approval of the 5% local match required for the assistance of the firefighters' grant in the amount of $28,000?
Mr. Chair, Mike Drury, so moved.
Have a motion. Could we have a second, please?
Mr. Chair, Tim Calhoun, second.
It has been properly moved and second that we would approve the 5% local match required for the fire apparatus. Ms. Chapman, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
It has been approved. The next item on new business is a retirement resolution, 2021-02, for Deputy Robert A. Hill, Surrey County Sheriff's Department. There is a resolution. There was a letter that I would like to extend to board members from the Sheriff's Department, from Sheriff Turner. The state said Deputy Robert A. Hill will be retiring on December 1st, 2020, after 20 years of service with the Surrey County Sheriff's Office. We all wish him well in this new chapter of life. With that being said, I respectfully request that the Board of Supervisors pursuant to 59.1-148.3 Code of Virginia allow Deputy Hill to purchase his service weapon in a sum of $1. Also request that a resolution be prepared and presented to Deputy Hill. The resolution is prepared, and I will read it as follows. Proclamation, Surrey County Sheriff's Office. Whereas Robert A. Hill was born on February 15, 1955, to John E. Hill, Sr., and Thomas Lorraine Hill, he graduated from LP Jackson High School. Robert also achieved a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science degree from Virginia State University. Whereas Robert had an outstanding career and served the community for 20 years and seven months with the Surrey County Sheriff's Office from April 3, 2000, to December 1, 2020. Whereas Robert enjoyed fishing, hunting, and has a passion for muscle cars. After his retirement from Surrey County Sheriff's Office, Robert plans to enjoy life. He also plans to help out with his mother and to take a few vacations. Now, therefore, I call as Turner, on behalf of the staff of the Surrey County Sheriff's Office, in recognition of his years of faithful and committed service to the citizens of the County of Surrey, present this proclamation to serve as a reminder that although he has retired, he will also be remembered as a reliable and local individual dedicated to both disposition and community, given under my hand on the first day of February in the year 2021. This is a proclamation from the Sheriff's Office, and we will be entertaining a resolution given to him from the county. So at this time, what's before the board is the approval for Deputy Hill to purchase his service weapon-- to purchase his service weapon for the sum of $1. Do we have any questions from the board members in regards to this request?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we would allow retiring Mr. Hill, Sheriff Deputy, to be able to buy his firearm for $1. This has been a tradition through the years for the county to allow those retiring to purchase their firearms and at this time, just say to him, be blessed.
Thank you, Ms. Little, we have a motion, could we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Drury, I'll give a second to that.
It's been properly moved and second. Mrs. Chapman, could you give us a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, the resolution has already been been prepared, and it will be presented to Deputy Hill. I hope he's on the line tonight so he could hear it being read for him. The next item is a one second. The next item is a General Foundation Grant Award to Suri Local Market. Do we have a presentation from staff on this item?
We do, sir. Mr. Harrison, Deputy Administrator will present.
Yes, thank you. Chairman Elliott, board members assembled, Mrs. Rollins. I'm pleased to announce that we have received another grant for our local market project from the Gin Anne Foundation. The Gin Anne Foundation is a Charlottesville-based foundation established by Jean and Anne World to support concrete, charitable projects and initiatives primarily in Virginia, consistent with the philosophies of the founders, who to my understanding were Suri County natives. Suri County is listed as the foundation, in the foundation guidelines, as the primary tile water locality to receive funds from the Gin Anne Foundation. The foundation will generally avoid contributions intended to augment the operation budget of an organization, and it concentrates its giving to enable an organization to undertake or expand a significant project or initiative that might otherwise not have been possible for the organization. The Gin Anne Foundation inquired about the Suri Local Market Project after seeing headlines for the oversea healthcare foundation and Suri County matching grant program for the establishment of a local market in Suri County, Virginia. The foundation president expressed to me that the final factor that urged the Gin Anne Foundation to make the award to the Suri Local Market Project was that the Suri County Board of Supervisors matched the oversea healthcare foundation's contribution. He stated that it was great to see a community invest in themselves, and it moved Gin Anne Foundation to contribute as well. So I would like to say kudos to the Suri County Board of Supervisors for that. And staff respectfully requests the acceptance of the grant from the Gin Anne Foundation for the Suri Local Market Project in the amount of $107,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Are there any questions, Mr. Harrison, from board members on the presentation?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions, but I say kudos to Suri County that we're gonna have a grocery store, and that we are being noticed, and people are donating money. I love it.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Little. Any other comments from board members or questions? If there be none, the chair would entertain a motion to accept the award of $107,000 from the Gin Anne Foundation in support of our local market.
Mr. Chair, this is Mr. Chair, this is Mike Drury, I will second it, and I will second it, and thanks to staff for making this possible.
Then properly moved and second. Could we have, Ms. Little, did you make the motion?
I did.
Okay, Ms. Little, yes.
Pardon me, sir, I just wanted to remind you in the board that that is a three-part action. In addition to accepting the war, there's two other action items that we need to consider. And those are enumerated right underneath the the subject matter in the agenda.
Okay. That's it, okay. That was the acceptance of the war. The second part is to amend the Budget Economic Development Fund, add the same and appropriate funds for expenditures. And number three, authorize a county administrator to enter into an agreement with the EDA for disbursement of the funds after consultation with the county attorney. That is the request for the motion. So we need the motion restated at this time, Ms. Little.
Okay. I move that we would accept the $107,000 from the grantor, and that it will be for the budget, Ms. Rollins. The second part?
Yes. Yes.
And that it would be in the budget, included in our budget for the year.
And appropriated.
And appropriated, okay, thank you.
And that she would come into agreement with the EDA for disbursement of the funds.
So moved.
So moved, could we have a second?
Mr. Chair, Mike Drury, second.
It has been properly moved and second, could we get a roll call vote on the Gin Anne Foundation grant?
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is carried. Next item on new business is to propose additional zoning fee, and this is the request for the public hearing. Am I correct with that, Ms. Rollins?
Yes, sir, Mr. Elliott, this agenda item was tabled or removed from the agenda in light of having a food book to have the public hearing on it. So this item, we can just say that we took care of it by asking the board to authorize staff to submit for a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Board members, we have before us a request for a public hearing on March the 4th, 2021, and request for a zoning, oh, fees for let me pull my, my records up, one second. Proposed addition to zoning fees, a request of a public hearing. Could we get a motion on this request, please?
Mr. Chair, Mike Drury, so moved.
So moved, could we get a second on the motion for the public hearing?
Second, Judy Little.
Thank you, Ms. Little, it's been properly moved and second that we would have a public hearing on March the 4th in regards to fees for solar. Can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Sorry, I was listening to a meeting in the car, caught the seven o'clock cherry. What do you want?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
This is Tim, I need to abstain from voting on this action item.
Thank you.
Okay, and you want lemonade?
Motion is carried, somebody need to cut their phone off to order lemonade. Thank you. Next item on new business, item number five, is donation of the MCI bus from Alawite County. At this time, we're going to ask staff to give us a presentation on this donation.
Yes, Mr. Elliott, I am going to, Mr. Phelps is on the call. I will ask him to provide the details that's needed for this agenda note. What we're asking the board to do tonight is to really notify you, number one, that we had been offered the opportunity to receive the mass casualty incident bus, and to give you all a heads up before you saw something show up in the county and didn't know where it came from, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Opportunity tonight to share that we received a donation from our neighbors. Mr. Phelps?
Okay, I have some difficulties here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, sir.
Sorry about that. We have, Suri County has been working with Alawite County in in their donation of their willingness to donate an MCI bus, which is a mass casualty incident bus to Suri County. The reason for the donation is HRMMRS, which is Hampton Roads medical, Metropolitan Medical Services, has recently upgraded Alawite County's MCI bus, and so they were willing to donate that to us. There's many benefits for Suri County to accept this bus. One is anytime we have any, any mass casualty incident, we have the ability to transport roughly six patients at one time, six patients by stretcher, as well as an additional eight, eight patients to the hospital at one time if we were to have a, a large event. We can also utilize this bus for evacuation during any type of storms or nuclear event that may occur in Suri County. We can also use, this bus could also be utilized for firefighter rehab in, in the event that we have a large-scale fire. If we have an event at one of our multi-housing complexes, it would allow us the ability to be able to transport larger amounts of citizens out of those areas and get them out of harm's way. There are some costs involved. Most of them are minimum, and we are working with HRMMRS to re-equip this bus, so the cost would be minimum to the county, and any of the additional, well, the, the cost would be minimum, their, their grants that they would supply us, and then we plan to use the radiological emergency preparedness grant to offset the, the remaining cost that would be with that. And then there's some general upkeep. We plan to house this unit over at the new emergency operations center. One of the things that we need to do is, it's gonna take a little, a little bit to get it online, we have to get a license through ODEMSA, which is where we would get our medical license in order to use that as a transport-type vehicle for that. And what we are seeking is the action of the board to accept this donation from Alawite County.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. It's always good to have nice neighbors that will help you out, and we appreciate Alawite County for thinking of Suri County. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Phelps in regards to the donation of the MCI bus? If there be none, the suggested action is to accept the donation from Alawite County to be used for mass casualty incidents in Suri County. Could we get a motion on this item?
Mr. Chair, this is Tim Calhoun. I made the motion to accept the donation of the MCI bus from Alawite County.
Motion, could we have a second, please?
This is Mike Drury, I will second it.
Then properly moved and second that we would accept the donation from Alawite County of the mass casualty bus. Could we get a roll call vote, Ms. Chapman, over this item?
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Oh.
Yeah, we got you. Motion is carried.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Next item on our agenda is unfinished business, which is a performance agreement with the Suri LLC Marketplace. Do we have a presentation on that tonight, Mr. Harrison? Or, Ms. Rollins?
We do, sir. This is an item that we're bringing back to the board for consideration and discussion. Mr. Harrison, if you will come on and give the overview of this to deny, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am, this agreement is basically an agreement between the county and Suri Market LLC, which we know is the grocer for the Suri Market Local Project. And it basically, certain stipulations or outline certain stipulations and repayment agreements or obligations in the agreement between the county and the LLC owner and the business owner for, for the grocery or local market. The board has reviewed, I'm assuming, and, and, and consents to the proposed agreement as posed to us and reviewed and by our council. So is there any questions that the board has at this time pertaining to the agreement?
Thank you, Mr. Harrison, for the presentation. Are there any questions of Mr. Harrison on the agreement? Or any input? Yes, Ms. Calhoun?
I'm sorry. Mr. Harrison, on, on the item number two, the contract documents and scope of work, there shows some exhibits on B, C, and D. Specifically, I'm asking about the item C, financial budget attached as exhibit B. I don't see that in this document.
The budget, I'm thinking, I asked Danielle to chime in if I'm incorrect, from what I'm understanding, the budget is the total project budget of for, for the local market. And we do have that, and if you need to see it attached, we can send that to you. I thought it was sent previously, but we can send you that if you need to see it.
I don't recall receiving it.
I'll chime in on that. I do apologize, Mr. Calhoun, and I do apologize again, navigating sometimes through the virtual environment and making sure you're not interrupting the caller can be a little challenging at times, so I do apologize, Mr. Calhoun. But we did receive, but we do have those budgetary documents for that. And I do recall it coming out in an attachment from Ms. Powell, and I just heard Mr. Harrison asking for Ms. Powell for that, and I did not hit forward to send that to Ms. Chapman to add to the agenda, so my sincere apologies for that, but we can make sure that you actually send, see that budget attachment. As a matter of fact, if you want to continue on with your discussion, I will certainly go through this and see whether or not I can share my screen so you can see it.
I hate to say this, Ms. Rollins, but I'm on the telephone, I don't think I can be able to see your screen. My, just my connection's so bad here where I'm located.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Calhoun. Are there any other concerns or questions, Mr. Harrison, on the agreement?
This is Judy Little. I do think that we need to show that we do have other persons that are on our call that are not members of the board that may want to see that project cost. That, so if Ms. Rollins could get that and present it, it would be something that we won't have to answer later. We could move on until she could do that, though, if you want to move to a next.
We will. Yes, we will, we will table this item if we can get back to it later on in the meeting, we'll move at this time to appointments. That was the last item in unfinished business, we will move to the appointments, and we'll come back to the agreement. The next item is subcommittees, boards, and commissions and appointments in regards to positions that Mr. Holmes was holding, and it is a continuation from our last meeting. We have to present to fellow board members that on building grounds, the Building and Grounds Committee, Mr. Calhoun, we present Mr. Calhoun for that position, for the position of Suri County Department of Social Services, Mr. Mike Drury. Surrey County Department of Social Services, Mr. Mike Drury, and for the Improvement Association will be yours truly, Dr. Elliott. And we fill those three positions. We can take a vote on those, all three of those at one time. We, as a board, would have filled all of our subcommittees of the county. So at this time, are there any questions on these three appointments?
I don't have any questions on those three. You going to entertain the other commission positions after this one?
Well, at the last meeting, we already approved, we voted and approved of all the other positions, personnel, finance, fiscal affairs, economic development committee, and planning commission, and highway and wetlands. Just to go down the slate of those, building grounds will be Mr. Calhoun. Personnel will be Ms. Judy Little and Mr. Drury. Fiscal affairs will be Mr. Drury and Mr. Calhoun. Economic Development Committee will be Ms. Little and Mr. Drury. Planning Commission will be Ms. Little. Highway, Transportation Safety, and Wetland Board will be yours truly. Social Services will be Mr. Drury, and Improvement Association will be yours truly. Virginia Gateway Region Board, Mrs. Judy Little. Crater Planning Commission, Mr. Michael Drury. Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, yours truly. Crater Workforce Development, Mr. Michael Drury. Chief Local Elected Officials, Ms. Little, Ms. Rollins, and yours truly as an alternate. But the only ones that need to be voted on tonight will be the three building and grounds, Surrey, Social Services, and Improvement Associations. All the other subcommittees were voted on and approved in our January meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we would approve the boards and commission numbers as enumerated by the chair. Thank you.
Could we get a second?
Second, Mr. Elliott.
It has been properly moved a second. Could we get a roll call vote on this, Ms. Chapman?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion is carried. We be busy about our business for Surrey County on our subcommittees. Thank you so much. Next item is presentations. Our first presentation tonight is from VDOT, report from Mr. Rossa Carroll.
Good evening, Chairman Elliott, other distinguished members of the Surrey Board. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm here to give the quarterly transportation report for Surrey County. This spans from October the first to December 31st, 2020. In that span, we received 231 maintenance work orders from the public. We have completed 197 for 85% completion rate. A majority of the outstanding are drainage concerns, but you could understand that it was wet as the times have been here the past three, four, five months. A few highlights of our accomplishments. We did do some chip sealing on Route 646 and 626. We have ditched over 14 miles of secondary roadways, 603, 618, and 626. Got unpaved road grading for 12 miles. We did unpaved shoulder machining and grading for 21 shoulder miles. Did brush removal, brush cutting for four shoulder miles, and we did machine patching using plant mix with 94 tons of asphalt. Slipping into the completed projects for this quarter, we have the the plant mix schedule that was completed in November, and that was the Route 10 portion between Chip Oaks Farm Road and Western Bacon's Castle Trail. Project that we're working on now is our plant mix project. It has been advertised. Bids have been received and a notice of award has been given, or a letter of award, and that is for our plant mix for next summer. That includes Route 10, about two miles east of Swan's Point Road to Holly Bush Road, and then another section of Route 10 from Salisbury Road to Martin Luther King Highway. We also have a latex overlay for our primaries that has been advertised. Bids received and a letter of award has been given to the successful bidder. And that is a section of Route 10 from Bacon's Castle Trail to Hog Island Road, Route 31 from the Sussex County Line to Carsley Road, Route 31 from Fateson Street to Holly Bush Road, Route 40 from Carsley Road to Salisbury Road, and then Route 40 from Sussex County Line to Otterdown Swamp Bridge. Just in case you're not familiar with latex overlay, it's, if you've been down 460 towards Windsor in the past four or five years, we did that whole stretch from Windsor towards Zuni. It's really a preventative overlay that does sealing of the existing asphalt, try to extend the life of the existing pavements. Upcoming projects for the county, we have the Smart Scale 2018 project. That's the intersection of Colonial Trail East and Route 617. That's realigning the intersection, putting in turn lanes. That is currently in preliminary engineering. We hope to go to our right-of-way phase starting this year, with construction to start on that project in 2023. Our second smart scale project that we have allocations for in the six-year plan is the Route 31 shoulder widening, and that's for bicycle accommodations, a five-foot shoulder widening on each side of 31 from the town of Surrey to the Pleasant Point Road. That is currently in preliminary engineering, and right-of-way is scheduled to start in 2022 with construction on that project scheduled to start in 2023. We, emergency response, we did respond to a couple small snows over the past couple, two days, January 26th, 26th, and again on the 30th and 31st. On the 30th and 31st, we were able to do pre-treating for our primary roadways and bridges and some of our major secondaries. With that, the last thing I'd like to add is that we also completed the last emergency fourth account project, which was on Route 650 heading toward Flades Park that was left over from the flooding event in the county. So good news there that all of that has been completed, and that concludes my quarterly transportation update. I'd be happy to take any questions or concerns at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll, for your presentation. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Carroll from board members? If there be none, thank you, Mr. Carroll, for your very informative presentation. Thank you, sir. Next item on our agenda is our financial advisor's presentation. And we give away the time for that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and Ms. Rollins, if you want to jump in there at all, I'll be quiet for a second while you.
No, not at all. I think we'll just go ahead and write into it, Mr. Lox. You've been what the board's talking about before, and I'll be just going to announce that you presented the financial advisor's report.
Very good, very good. Well, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, obviously, it's nice to see everybody this evening. Somehow, it's a new calendar year. It's been a couple months since we last talked, but we hope everyone is safe and well. What we have tonight is not a long presentation on purpose. I'll tell you, Mr. Chairman, we don't need any particular action from you. Our goal this evening, knowing that you now are in the throes of the budget process, midway through fiscal year 2021, and thinking about the year 2022, we appreciate the opportunity to come back and talk about some of the concepts and thoughts that we had discussed, really going back into last calendar year. So we have a presentation. I might ask, Ms. Rollins, I can share my screen? Or maybe if there is someone on your end that puts it up on the screen. I don't know that.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm making you the presenter.
Very good. Thank you for bearing with us, Mr. Chairman.
No problem at all.
Give it a second here. Ms. Rollins, I did, something happening over here. I don't know if maybe that's still in process on your end?
No, Mr. Brown is making you presenter.
Okay. I will wait patiently, and I'll wait. But I think, yeah, I'll do this before we have the actual presentation. I think I'll give you just a little bit of an overview. And then, of course, as soon as I say that, here comes the little button, so we'll do that. We need to bring this presentation over here. Okay, there we go. So hopefully there, Mr. Chair and others, you can see that.
Yes.
In terms of the financial status update. So I appreciate you bearing with us, and certainly I suspect you will be able to meet in a room. We don't have to worry about this, but what we have tonight. So we called this a financial status update. Again, we know you're over midway through your fiscal year, meaning fiscal year 21, and also really thinking about how do we plan for the fiscal year 2022 budget. I think we've seen over the last several months is certainly challenges with COVID, but hopefully not, and as we understand it from Ms. Rollins, Ms. Swindell, certainly not the level of challenges that many feared in the early days of the pandemic through this summer. When I say challenges, meaning of a financial nature. So with that, we'll talk through a couple pages here. Again, you may recall the last time we really talked, the county was in the process of working through financing, and so I think our first piece of news for you, that financing went very, very well last fall. County was able to finance $6 million of new money capital projects. That went through the Virginia Resources Pool Program, state fund program that worked out very nicely. The interest rate on your loan, which is about a 15-year loan, plus or minus, is about a 1.73%. So you were able to advantage of very, very favorable interest rates, that rate is fixed for the whole term of the loan. So as you think about being able to position yourself, even with all the challenges that we face, take advantage of what was a, and continues to be, a highly favorable interest rate environment. Get some of those dollars to continue to invest in your capital infrastructure and do so at a very, very cost-effective interest rate. So kudos to that as a board for being able to work to get that done, and we appreciate the opportunity to help you with that. Also, obviously, your FY22 CAFRA was recently done. We've seen that reviewed element, but and what we noticed in that is a trend that we talked probably about a year ago, maybe a little bit less in terms of fund balance and capital projects. And so we'd like to just bring some thoughts up to you this evening, Mr. Chair and others, largely with respect to thinking about fund balance and thinking about how it is we fund capital projects into the future to make sure it's sustainable and make sure the county maintains its financial strength into the future. We'll go to the next page here. And some of our key observations. Again, you have been, and I say you, Surrey County have been well-run financially. As we view audits, we understand the nature of how you run your budgets. And so first and foremost, as you think about your FY22 budget, you've got a very good track record with which to do the planning that you're about to do. Amongst the reasons we say that is the fact that you've got a very strong fund balance. Any local government, if you're going to be considered well-run, needs to have a very strong fund balance, and historically, you've done that. We say there in the second point that of all the various financial metrics and measurements we'd talk about, for a local government, fund balance is arguably the most important of any of those. And so when we looked at that fiscal year 2020 CAFRA, meaning the fiscal year that ended last June 30th, is while your fund levels are solid, they did decline a reasonable amount between your prior year's audit in that 2020, something that we took note of. And what it looks is that's largely driven by the need to continue to make investments in your capital infrastructure. So it doesn't look due to a, what we call a budgetary structural imbalance. Dollars to cover our operating expenditures. What it really looks like it's driven by is the fact that you, as a county, like every county, have to keep up with your capital infrastructure, that's your buildings, that's your roofs, your HVAC, all those kind of things. And what we've noticed is there's not a dedicated funding stream with which to take care of those things. And so the last several years, you've had to make needed improvements to your buildings, to your facilities, and the dollars that have been available to do that have not been from recurring dollars. It's been from largely one-time dollars in terms of that fund balance. Now, certainly in the short run, the financing we did last fall is going to give you an infusion of that roughly $6 million to take care of some bigger projects. But it's those annual recurring capital needs, what I'll call, you know, sort of unofficially, the smaller projects that pop up each and every year, no different than if you own a home, each and every year, there's things you end up doing to your house you don't plan on. They just kind of pop up, right? The roof ends up leaking, the air conditioner needs fixed or replaced. No different with the county level whereby there are things that are going to pop up each and every year, whether it be vehicles, whether it be HVAC. And it's those things that we really like to see where it's possible you have a dedicated annual stream of revenues to take care of them. Bottom of the page here, we obviously know, we all do, that you are fortunate insofar as the Dominion Plant, the Surrey Power Plant, provides a very large amount of your revenues. Like we've talked about, and you know, Mr. Chair and others, that has some drawbacks too. It means we're very highly dependent upon a single, very, very large taxpayer. And so that's something else we keep in mind when we think about, make some recommendations to you this evening with respect to fund balances, knowing just how reliant we are on that one single taxpayer. We give you a little bit of a couple statistics here in terms of your total budget being there about $30 million. And if you think about that, about 45% of that comes from those public service corporation taxes tied to the power plant. So it's a very, very large concentration. It's abnormally large for County Virginia. Again, you're blessed to have it there, but it does create some different dynamics in terms of managing your Again, you're blessed to have it there, but it does create some different dynamics in terms of managing your finances. We also know that by virtue of the fact you've got that big concentration and smaller population, the revenues you end up getting from the state for critical things like schools are less than many of your peers. A lot of those formulas the state has tend to be population-driven. They tend to be tax-based driven. And so it just increases the level of concentration we have from that power plant. So we've got a variety of things to think about and consider. Again, don't need any formal decisions this evening. We just wanted to provide this as information. Maybe food for thought as you go through your budget planning process. But at the bottom of the page here, some thoughts and recommendations we have. Number one, think about strengthening your existing fund balance policies and maybe just refining in place. We'll talk about that in a couple pages. Number two, we do recommend that as you plan for the future, think about identifying future revenue sources that'll sustainably fund capital. And that gets back to that point that each and every year, even if you don't have a big, big capital project, there's going to be certain things that you need to keep up with, whether it be vehicles, et cetera. And so that's part of what we're talking about here. Third is obvious in terms of what you're doing with Ms. Rollins, and we heard a little bit about that earlier this evening with economic development wins. That's exciting. That'll be important as you think about the future. Getting a more diverse revenue stream. And clearly, you see the initial sprouts of that occurring. And lastly, continuing to focus on the multi-year side of things, meaning let's not just think about a single year's budget, but let's think about multi-year trends and how decisions that you make in this budget year will impact not just the following year, but maybe three, four, five years out. So page number four, I'm not going to pretend that those numbers are necessarily going to be readable on this page. They are right out of your audit. But I think all we want to show here in the green is that in FY2020, you had a nice operating surplus. So when you look at your operating revenues versus your operating expenditures, you had about a $1.5 million surplus. That's in that green kind of highlighting there in little green box. The red box is what we talked about at the beginning whereby that operating surplus turns into a decline balance because of the need to spend the dollars on capital and the fact that the only source, the primary source of doing that in FY20 was indeed the fund balance. So as we flip the page to page number five, I'll just show you a couple trends here. And again, this is probably a two-part message in that as we look at one portion of your fund balance, this is the unassigned fund balance. Many times referred to as a rainy day fund. It's a solid level. It is. It's about 26% of your total revenues. But it's declined a fair amount over the last three years. You look at where it was back in 2018, it was about 40% of your revenues. And in 2016, it was about 47% of your revenue. So it's declined a fair amount as a proportion of your budget. It's at a solid level today, but it's something we'd recommend thinking about putting a policy in place that would put a floor on how low that unassigned fund balance goes. And I'll say to you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, a recommendation on this policy is to think about keeping your unassigned fund balance at about 25% or above of your budget. So it's another way of saying where you are right now with your 2020 level, we don't recommend you go any further, meaning go any further lower. It's a good level, but given all the other dynamics, that's as low as we, again, as outsiders, we realize it's easier for us to say. But that's as low as we'd recommend the unassigned piece of this. So we flipped the page. And a little bit more on the fund balance. Your fund balance is made up of a couple of different pieces. That prior page, we talked about unassigned, which is arguably the most important. But you do have a couple other pots, if you will, within the fund balance, as most local governments do. And so when we add those up, it's called the committed fund balance that goes with your unassigned. The decline over the last several years is not quite as severe. You are at about 28.5% in terms of the unassigned, but about 68% in terms of the aggregate. So that's a solid level. And what we'd like to talk about and recommend in a couple pages is we kind of rework the way that fund balance is accounted for within your policies. And again, set that floor on the unassigned at about 25% to maintain the committed portion, what we might call like a revenue stabilization fund, and have that revenue stabilization fund be a direct buffer against the potential of an issue over the Dominion Plant. So we'll talk about that a little bit more in a couple pages. Page number seven, just to kind of show this to you, this is helpful for us as relative outsiders. We know all your peers here very, very well, all actually clients of ours. But where you look at your real estate tax rate, I think the point here is you're very competitive reach. You're about five pennies under in Charles City, and then others in the region are below you in terms of that real estate tax rate. And again, you're unique because roughly 70% of that gets paid by the power plant. So if you look at the page, you see the trend here largely level in terms of what that tax rate has been. You have a two-cent decline there back in 2016. But again, largely level in terms of the actual tax rate paid on the real estate. So with that, it's just a little background on that side. We're going to circle back to another couple pages. We'll talk for just a moment about your debt profile and where we are right now with that. We mentioned at the outset, the financing that took place last fall that worked out very nicely, we factored all of that in. So both the refinancing that was done and the new money, we factor that into what you'll see in the next couple pages. Is about managing the county's debt profile and doing that responsibly. We would recommend that we put in place some policies, just like we're talking about on the fund balance side. As long as we're going through this budgeting process and planning process, think about putting in place some policies that'll make sure our debt levels are responsible levels or level levels that'll be viewed favorably by outside lenders. And so there's really two that we'd recommend thinking about. One is debt to assessed value. That's basically how much debt do we have relative to the size of our tax base? And the other, in the middle of the page here, is debt service to expenditures. That debt service to expenditures is basically how many pennies out of every dollar in your budget go to make a debt service payment? So it's basically a way to make sure we don't over-leverage and take on too much of a payment that we can't afford in terms of debt service. So next slide here, page 11, just gives you a graphical picture of what you have outstanding, meaning in terms of outstanding debts, a variety of different issues, but we've just tried to kind of condense it here. What you're seeing is you've got about $25 million outstanding for county of your size. It's not an unreasonable amount. We'll show you what that means. Your payments beginning in fiscal year 2022 are about equal each year. And that goes out through about fiscal year 2028. So you have kind of a plateau right now in terms of your annual payments, the dollars that will come out of the budget. No spikes per se, and then you get out to 29 into 30, et cetera, and those payments begin to drop off. So that's something we think about. And you can use to your advantage in the future as you think about future projects. Okay, so we'll talk about these two debt ratios. The first here is debt to assessed value. Really, how many dollars of debt do we have outstanding relative to the size of our tax base? We've got a lot of data here, a lot of numbers in the page. But if you look at that graph on the top left here, light green bars show how your debt versus assessed value pays down over the 20 or so years. And you can see it's a nice steady decline because you make annual payments on your debt unless the balance goes down. And what we tried to highlight here in the green with the kind of hashes there is what we'd recommend putting in place as a policy, meaning a ceiling. I don't want to go any higher than that policy. What that would do is make sure we keep in line with strong AA range credit ratings, even though we don't necessarily have a credit rating. Make sure we're well-positioned there. It means that if you put that policy in place, you've got capacity to do future things. Doesn't mean you have to do any future things, but you've got the capacity to do them. Again, if you were to put that policy in place. We'll flip the page to page number 13. And on page number 13, showing this other ratio of debt service to expenditures, this is again, how many pennies every dollar in the budget go to make a debt service payment? And what you see, again, looking at those light green bars, is right now you've got about seven to eight pennies out of every dollar in your budget going to make a debt service payment. That's a very reasonable level. It's less than 10%, provides good annual financial flexibility to you. And what we would think about there and recommend to you is you put in place a policy whereby that ratio wouldn't go any higher than maybe 10, 11%. Anything under 15% is viewed as strong by the rating agencies. You could argue we could be a little more conservative and maybe think about something in the 10, 11% range. If we were indeed to do that, again, you would have capacity to do some things here in the future and do so without being irresponsible or having this ratio get into an uncomfortable kind of position. So with that, we'll try to just kind of summarize some of these for you, Mr. Chair, on the next couple pages. And as we mentioned, you've been well-run historically, so kudos to you and prior boards and management for doing that. Second bullet point here, fund balance levels are strong, but they have declined due to that need to continue to make capital investments. Third bullet point, your debt levels are very solid. You've got capacity to do future things. We think if you put in place those policies to make sure they continue to be solid. And that'll also help provide you, provide staff, us as your outside advisors, some good guardrails as we think about capital planning to determine what is affordable and what is responsible in terms of taking on future capital projects. And frankly, it also helps as you are looking at and communicating with the public, being able to say, here are the things that we're able to do responsibly. Here's the level of dollars we can take on and still be a well-run government. And so again, I think that's another advantage of thinking about putting in place these policies. We know we've got the dedicated, excuse me, the concentrated tax revenues. And continuing that focus on economic development, we highlight here the sold the Spring Grove project in terms of solar. We heard about the market earlier in the meeting. That's exciting to hear. We look forward to seeing all of that to come to fruition. The last two bullet points, again, thinking about those two policies on the fund balance side that will help safeguard what you have right now, make sure it doesn't get at an uncomfortable level and really make sure that if ever there was a problem, especially at the power plant, and I think if the last year has taught us anything, it's that major problems can occur that are completely and totally unpredicted. And so I think while certainly it's been a challenging year, provides some good lessons in terms of planning. It's a good time to be thinking about how it is we plan for the future. And so I think just to get a little more rationale as to why we would really recommend that we kind of put a floor in terms of how much lower that policy goes. Okay, so that gets us to page 16. Give you some specific numbers and certainly answer any questions you have. As it relates to the fund balance you have, if you just want to sum up a couple of numbers of your 2020 audit, you have about 18.2 million of fund balance between unassigned, we talked about, and the committed. If you were to do the policy on the unassigned that says we're going to keep 25% of our annual revenues, if not more, but at least 25%, that's about $7.7 million. You have that right now. You don't have to come up with that somewhere else. You've got it sort of within the bank, so to speak. And so there's no need to come up with any additional dollars to meet that particular and most critical policy. The second piece of it, which is in the middle of the page, is to think about putting in place a, what we call here, a budget or revenue stabilization fund. It can kind of go either way in terms of the exact nomenclature. But the point of it is to have a second level of security against these uncertain events and unplanned major events that can happen, whether it's in the world or locally. And we'll tell you, other local governments that have this likely would not have as substantial as we're recommending to you. The reason we're recommending such a substantial level of that budget revenue stabilization fund is again, because of the power plant, because of just how dependent upon it we are. And so the thought there is if we take the balance of that 18.2 million, it's about $10.5 million. Again, you have it right now. It's in the bank, not having to go out and try and find new dollars in the short run. And we put that in that budget revenue stabilization fund. And then here's the piece where if we could grow that over the next five years, such that we knew we had one year's worth of revenue basically from the power plant. That's really kind of what we're getting to. Sort of for some reason, that plant, we're to go down, there's some issues, whatever it is, we don't pretend to know, you know, all the details of running a power plant. But again, I think uncertain times provide a good tool to kind of evaluate what we have and where our potential risks are. So if we're able to build that revenue budget stabilization fund over several years to a point where we know we have basically a year's worth of revenue from there, that's something that we'd recommend that you think about doing. It's got some other advantages too. It doesn't just sit there. It spins off revenue for you. So interest earnings that spin off of those dollars helps alleviate other pressures in the budget. And certainly, it's looked favorably upon by outside lenders who'd like to see very strong fund balances and very strong reserve levels. And so the last bullet point down here that we talk about, knowing it's budget season. And while this may not be popular, I think we view strongly, want to make sure you have good information from us, whether or not it may be always the most popular. But a way to get a lot of this done, meaning the capital that you've taken on, the need for recurring dollars for the future capital projects, as well as think about growing some of those dollars in reserve. About a four penny impact, meaning four cents on the real estate tax rate, would really take care of a lot of those needs, would take care of everything. And we certainly realize that you, as a county, would want to go find other revenue sources. So we're not entirely reliant upon that. The real estate tax rate, we know the meals taxes has been something that is a nice addition in terms of broadening the revenue you should get, to some of the things being talked about at the state in terms of sales taxes, et cetera, to help again broaden the revenue streams that you have. But insofar as the real estate tax rate is the only thing we have, or it's not the only thing, but it's the most powerful lever that we have to pull, doing about four pennies will allow you to take care of those existing debt service dollars that we took on last year. And it gets you about $250,000 a year in recurring annual capital. That could take care of those things like HVAC, like roof repairs in the future. It would also provide some dollars to begin, again, making sure we can build some of those budget revenue stabilization fund dollars in the policy. And so again, there's some cash flows and some other things. again, there's some cash flows and some other things at the back of this presentation. I'm not going to go through that number by number, which want to kind of give this as as food for thought now, let you mull it over. But that's about sort of the impact that we're thinking about on page seventeen. If you wanted to break that up, say, okay, how's that two pennies kind of get delineated? It's about two pennies that we take care of recent borrowing that we did that's in line with all the discussions we had last fall in terms of taking on the roughly six million would be the equivalent of about two pennies, the real estate tax rate. And then the additional two pennies would help you take care of the revenue stabilization fund and also some of the dollars for cash funded capital. So trying to pack a lot of things into into one, you know, sort of cohesive concept. I don't know if we've done that successfully, but that was certainly was our intent for you this evening. And so our last page, in terms of what we would think about as next steps, and certainly happy to answer any questions that you have, Mr. Chair, other members of the board. Welcome any commentary from Ms. Rollins and Ms. Swindell, if anyone to add. But it's February fourth this evening, when really what we'd be thinking about is over the course of your budget planning cycle. You may take this and have different ideas. You may say, nope, toss it out. We don't like it. We want to try something different. I think our thought for you is that we're here to help you work through that, working with Ms. Rollins and Ms. Swindell. So that happens with the balance of the winter time, and by the time you get to the springtime, which weather-wise hopefully comes soon, but time-wise, you know, we get some things to accomplish. We'd think about putting in place those adopted policies with your budget and then putting in place the budget. So that, Mr. Chair, again, we appreciate all the time this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have or take any comments.
Thank you, Kyle. I think Mr. Elliott is on mute.
Yeah, I was on mute. I was just talking, talking away. Just thank you so much for your presentation and your recommendations on our policies for fund balance are very informative. And I do appreciate the outlook in the event that Dominion Power is no longer here. There's something that's been on my mind, so I thank you all for that challenge and showing us what we need to do in the event that would occur. So thank you very much. That's my comment. Board members, do you have any other comments or questions at this time?
I appreciate, this is Judy. I appreciate the presentation and you did open my eyes to some of that polit, the policies that you talked about. But as a board member myself and as a taxpaying citizen of Surrey, have to take that into consideration also. So, but I I like your idea. I think that's, it's not a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other board members? If not, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. We really appreciate it.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes, Ms. Little. I mean, Ms. Rollins.
That's okay. I also want to say Ms. Swindell is on the call. I appreciate her, appreciate her certainly taking the time to work also with our financial advisors to put together the information that we needed to be able to give the board and citizens this presentation on this evening. Obviously, as you all know, we're geared to prepare for the budget season, and we just thought this was timely information to present to the board, especially as we look into really hone in on what those policies that need to be in place to help us better prepare for a financial outlook. As you all saw earlier in the presentation during the joint work session, especially when we talk about the CIP and all the funding needs of not just the school division, but also those that are going to be coming about for the county and how better we can position the county to be able to take care of those needs. And these financial policies are definitely going to be able to assist us in in making sure that we do just that. So again, thank you for the opportunity for us to present this to you this evening. Ms. Swindell?
Thank you so very much.
Yes, Ms. Swindell, did you have anything to add?
No, I I think that Kyle did a very thorough job and, you know, this is a topic that we will continue to address as we move through the budget cycle because it's going to be directly related to the upcoming budget presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, definitely.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We will now move to our third presentation, which would be Surrey County High School, the solar project.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a request that's coming to the county from the school division. You all heard the the short part of the announcement or the presentation during the joint work session. The school division want to have the opportunity again to bring this to the board so you all can be aware of the project they are considering at the school division. And before, and I know Mr. Harrison keeps saying I'm putting him on the spot, but before we ask the the school division or the representative that's going to speak on this project, I do want to ask Mr. Harrison to just, just give a little short statement in terms of the actual project itself in light of the fact that we do have solar things going on in the county, that we want to be clear to know that this is a project that is much different than the normal solar projects. Mr. Harrison, can you just speak on that for one statement, please, sir?
Yes, ma'am, I will. This is chair and board, everyone assembled. This project is not defined as a solar farm or solar utility facility. This project is just an accessory or use for power for clean energy for the high school. So it is not, we we will not have to go through the formal process of public hearings and planning commission involvement. It can be approved at the administrative level. And this is FYI for the board. From what I understand, the board, school board has already heard this presentation and they have agreed to this solar utility support project. I would say personally, I have spoken with the presenters and seen what they're presenting and I am in agreement with it as well as agent of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you so very much. We thank you for informing us of what is happening at the high school. Are there any questions from any board members at this time? I do see Dr. Sims is on the line, so if you have any questions in relation to this, please feel free to have them at this time. There are no other questions from our board members? Thank you so very much for the presentation on the solar project at Surrey County High School. We will now have our financial report given by Ms. Carol Swindell, our interim finance director. Ms. Swindell?
Thank you. And Ms. Rollins, if you or Mr. Brown could make me the presenter so that I can pop the report up on the screen, please? I'm sorry, I'm trying to to reach Ms. Rollins by text so that we, I'm not sure whether she or Mr. Brown has to make the change on the the meeting.
Yes. Yes, Ms. Swindell, but prior to Ms. Swindell, Mr. Elliott, and I apologize, I was actually answering another call. Okay, well, there is Ms. Swindell, okay? Ms. Swindell can certainly, if we can ask you to hold off on that one second. Mr. Elliott, I do apologize, sir, but earlier on, we was talking about the solar project for the schools. And you would ask whether or not anyone else had a presentation, and we did have a representative from the school that wanted to share just briefly regarding that. So if if we can allow them that time, that would be greatly appreciated. They did take the time to come on this evening. And our representative from
Thank you.
Or Miss, or Dr. Sims, if you are, you can certainly share the presenter who's on tonight to talk about that project very briefly. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to my attention. This is, this is what you get when you are virtual, but I'm glad to have Dr. Sims with us tonight. Didn't want to cut her off. I saw her there. And we do have a presentation given to us in our package, so Dr. Sims, take it away.
Good evening, once again, Mr. Chairman of the Board of Supervisors as well as all assembled. And I will be very brief, but we do have online two individuals that like to turn the microphone and the cameras over too. And we have the representative of our solar project, Mr. Frank Dubek. Mr. Dubek has been working hand in hand with Mr. Aaron Wooden on bringing that solar project to Surrey County Public Schools. So with that being said, I'll turn the microphone over to the two gentlemen that are also online. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Can I get a thumbs up that I can be, my mic's working? All right.
We can hear you.
Thank you, Dr. Sims. We are a pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Frank Dubek. I'm with Sun Tribe Solar. I would like to share slides if that's possible. I think, was it Ms. Rollins? Were you able to turn over that presenter status to me?
That is Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown is certainly going to work on getting your presentation to be shown. Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
There it is.
All right. Can everybody see my screen?
We can, sir.
Again, my name is Frank Dubek. I'm with Sun Tribe Solar. I'm joined by my colleague Seth Herman. We are based out of Charlottesville, just down the road. Mr. Harrison asked me tonight to share a quick, high-level overview of the solar project for the high school. I'll say this has been a fun journey. You've got a great team. I need to shout out to a few people, Dr. Sims, Mr. Wooden, Mr. Prombley, Mr. Savage, and recently, Mr. Harrison. They've certainly acted altruistically, asking really good questions, and they did something that we really cherish was they went and met with some of our other customers firsthand to see what their experience has been with solar and with our company. Additionally, I'd like to recognize our partner, Dominion Energy's Bright Suite. We've always had a really strong relationship with that group. And your leadership team helped us recognize the combined power of Sun Tribe and Dominion. As we've discussed tonight, and as we all know, you're no stranger to solar. It was mentioned earlier that this is a different solar project than typically seen. The solar from this array will go directly to your high school, and so 100% of that energy is going to be delivered directly to your school. We're also able to provide a discount of greater than 5% on your energy, so it's going to reduce your overall expenses in that category for a long term. And lastly is we've included education grants that are going to help your students get further connected to solar technology, especially knowing that it's in backyard, literally, when they're at school. This is all made possible by a vehicle called a power purchase agreement. Not to get too in-depth on that, but one summary could be that it's, there's no out-of-pocket expenses and no maintenance costs involved at all. And Surrey County High School is just going to be buying the energy that is produced by the system itself. Our company does more solar at Virginia schools than anyone else in the state by a long threat, and we've really gotten here because of how we approach our engineering and by safety being a core value. And I think ultimately, hopefully, this has proven out so far with the leadership that I've worked with, that it's our holistic approach to how we work with our clients. So right now, we're working with over 14 different school systems. Here's a quick sample of some of them, including some cities and government institutions. This represents what the array, like where the array will be placed. So if you can see, the blue bars on the screen will be outside of the track and the baseball field. It's about 820 kilowatts. It's going to offset about half the power to the high school. Our company was founded on environmental stewardship, and this has been recognized by the EQ and the Department of Conservation and Recreation, but we pioneered this in Virginia, so we do pollinator-friendly solar. I was worried I wasn't going to get to show the slide tonight, and I was imagining just describing like Julie Andrews from the Sound of Music running through a field. This is how we hope the array will look at Surrey High School. We really wouldn't be doing our jobs if we weren't, I guess, building the next generation of NTP advocates, and so we're going to provide grant funding, support, and enhance your existing technology programs. I spent some time with Mr. Wooden and also Aaron Grimm discussing what's happening now, what the school systems like to happen, and we've got loose plans laid out on as this unfolds, how we could dovetail in and support these programs. Of course, COVID makes it a little bit more of a challenge to to button this up, but it is, that's what we'd like to have. And that concludes my presentation. We thank you so much for having us here. I can entertain any questions if you all have any.
I have, I have one question. This is Chair Chairman Elliott speaking. How durable are the panels? And the reason why I'm asking the location that they're going to be placed, I played baseball on that field, and I hit a couple of home runs over that fence right there. Will it, will it sustain? That's the truth. Will it sustain, you know, a direct hit like that?
Yeah, we were worried if there was some Barry Bonds on your teams. These panels are rated for impact. There's some golf ball impact studies that they do for solar panels. The thing is, is that we're maintaining and operating the system, and our whole business is contingent upon that system working. So it's monitored online 24/7. If there's a hiccup in the system, whether it's from an impact from a baseball, feels a little bit unlikely, but or other things that could pop up, we're going to get notified immediately and we're going to act on it quickly.
But would it, would it be an expense to the county or the school system if it's damaged in that manner?
It would not.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from fellow board members?
Hey, this is Tim Calhoun. I'm just asking, do y'all have a projected savings that the power produced by the panels for the school, we would recognize?
Yeah, so it's, it's about $250,000 of the life of the system and includes some needed electrical.
I'm sorry, you said 250,000 over the life?
I'm getting some feedback from someone.
You're kind of breaking up. That's why I wanted to confirm that. That amount. Thank you.
I have Judy Little. I have a question. Will this provide power for all three schools?
No, Ms. Little, it goes specifically to the high school. Thank you.
This is Joseph Maddox. I had a question. Sir, I was curious, you said $250,000 for the life of the project. What is the life of the project, the, you know, the expected lifespan of that project, of the solar panel?
The agreement would be for 30 years.
And as for the baseball comment, Mr. Elliott, I appreciate And as for the baseball comment, Mr. Elliott, I appreciate that, being a baseball fan myself. Is there any type of protecting guard fencing, some type of wiring to protect that from happening? It can be installed on that side of the panels?
The array is, will be completely fenced per code. I believe it's a seven-foot chain link fence, if I'm not mistaken. But there's no screening provided in case of a really good homerun on the homecoming night.
Thank you. Fellow citizens, we will entertain your requests or comments and public comments at the end. Don't want to be rude, but just want to let you know how things are done. Thank you, Mr. Maddox, for your interest in the project. Are there any other comments from board members? If there'll be none, we will.
One more question.
Yes, Mr. Carr. Yes.
Why are we paying for what is produced and not what is used?
Thank you for that question. There's a lot of different factors that go into that design of the array, whether we're looking at setbacks from the property lines or from trying to get appropriate orientation or trying to avoid shading issues from trees. So we tried to max out the area that we had available to us. And that produced about an 800, just over 800 kilowatt system. So you're going to be using all the energy that that system produces.
Frank, is it okay if I just, just add a direct comment? This is Seth Herman, Director of Client Partnerships at Sun Tribe. Appreciate the gentleman's comment to just illuminate a little bit more. This system is going to offset 47% of the total consumption of the facility. And so the agreement, which is a power purchase agreement, is simply that the, the school will purchase the electricity that the panels produce. And the reason that that's the agreement setup is because we can forecast and build a system that will produce electricity, but we need to have an agreement that that electricity will be purchased. If the school district chooses to, to turn off electricity for six months, we're still producing electricity and per, per the agreement, we need you to agree to purchase it. That's really the only way that we can get the financing back in to actually produce the system. Now, if we ever enter a situation where we have two months, let's say, where the, the, the school is not actually consuming electricity because everything's off, you're actually building credits. It's called net meter. And so the system produces credits that go back on the grid. And then as you start drawing electricity, you actually absorb those credits. So there's a tremendous benefit to the district that they'll immediately recognize through using those credits. I could imagine if this was 100% of an offset, there may be some risk to the district, but seeing that we're offsetting less than 50%, there is a very minimal risk to the district for, for that production of, of energy.
Thanks, Seth.
I understand that. Thank you. And then just one more question. This is kind of a silly question, but we have a flag that's sitting out there where your panels are. Are y'all going to relocate that flag, flag pole?
Yes, we can relocate that.
Frank, it's probably also worth just mentioning too, that at the end of the agreement, we remove the array, we remove the fencing and restore the site to its prior use. And so that, you know, the cost of taking this down and restoring the site is also borne by Sun Tribe Solar as well.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions from fellow board members? If not, thank you so much for your presentation, Sun Tribe. Thank you very much for working here in Suri County.
Members of the board, have a great, have a great evening.
Thank you. At this time, we will have now our financial report from Ms. Swindell.
Thank you. And if Mr. Brown could make me the presenter, then I can put the, there, there we go. Thank you. Good evening. And I'll, I'll move through this quickly because in, in several instances, this is similar to material that you heard earlier at the joint work session. This is the second quarter financial report for the 2020-21 fiscal year. And it, it provides information on the county's financial position through the end of December 2020. Basically, the, the budget appears to be on target. Revenues are coming in higher than expected due to higher-than-expected assessments for the Public Service Corporation. In looking at the, the overall financial condition, we're at 50% of the year. General fund revenues are at 94% of projections and expenditures are at 37%. The top five revenues for the county account for about 93% of your total general fund revenues. So by doing a deeper dive into those five revenues, we can get a pretty good understanding of what's happening with overall revenues for the general fund. The, because the county receives much of its tax, much of its revenue from taxes, and those taxes are due on December 5th, revenue levels are typically high by the end of September each year because much of those, almost all the taxes come in by the due date. As noted earlier, the Public Service Corporation revenue is at 105% of budget. Real estate, personal property, constitutional officers, and the Personal Property Tax Relief Act are all expected to be at or very close to budget. The constitutional officers line item represents the reimbursement that we get from the state. And in the case of the, the registrar, we only get that once a year at the end of the year. And the Personal Property Tax Relief Act is capped at 677,907 per year. And we get that in two payments. We get 80% of it and then we'll get the remaining 20% by the end of the year. Looking at the expenditure side, operating costs are generally on target. As I mentioned earlier, the total general fund expenditures are at 37% of budget. The, the big category in the general fund is transfers to other funds, and this is primarily the transfer to the school system. We are making regular transfers to the schools, but other funds that, that the general fund supports, such as a debt service fund and CIP, we typically do the transfers closer to the end of the year once we know what the, the total amount needed is. The, the health and other agencies function is slightly over budget due to the Community Services Board being paid for two, for two quarters. And the, the CARES Act expenditures that are shown don't include spending that was incurred in the Social Services and Economic Development Funds. And we'll be making an adjustment so that we, you know, we can get a better budget actual for all the CARES Act costs. Below that, we have a detailed expenditure information by department. And again, as you can see, the departments don't show any, you know, any negative trends that are concerning overall. Rather than going over, you know, every, every department line by line, I would just invite you to, to review this at your leisure. And if you have any questions either now or, or afterwards, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Ms. Swindell. Just, just one quick question. Looking at the 37%, the timeframe that we're in in the year, we, we are online to, to fall in, in line with our budget.
Yes, sir. That's, that's correct. We don't see any reason to, to believe that, that we were going to be over budgeted any overall for the bottom line.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, board members, or comments? If there'll be none, thank you so much for your presentation tonight, Ms. Swindell. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you.
The next item is our investment letter, LGIP investment letter for November and December. Is there a presentation on that or is it just a report?
Just a report, sir.
Okay. Our other report is from Mr. Phelps. So Phelps, I know that you hear our emergency service report from Mr. Phelps.
Good evening, Chairman of the Board, Board members, Melissa, Ms. Rollins, and citizens of Suri County. I wanted to give you a brief update on COVID-19. We are currently at approximately 330-plus cases in Suri County, positive cases in Suri County, five deaths, and approximately 16 hospitalizations. Suri County will be sponsoring a COVID, a drive-through COVID-19 testing on February 9th from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And then again on February 25th. Pre-registration is required for that testing. Suri County also is working diligently with the Crater Health District to bring a mass vaccination clinic to Suri County. We have been, and through our talks with the Crater Health District, we have been informed that we will be able to bring a mass vaccination clinic to Suri County, but that the time is, is to be determined, the time and date is to be determined. But we have been working diligently with them to, to make that happen. And we are currently looking for qualified vaccinators. And if, if anybody in, in Suri County is a RN or a EMT intermediate, someone that is qualified to actually administer vaccinations, we are seeking qualified volunteers who can administer vaccinations. And they can call our office at 294-5205 and, and contact us over that we can get with them and do some training. But other than that, that's a brief report for COVID and the vaccination.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. I just want to, want to publicly thank you for the work that you're doing. I know it's a difficult time with the COVID situation and dealing with the Crater Health Department and trying your best to look out for the citizens of Suri County. So I thank you for your efforts. These are some critical times that we're dealing with. And I thank you and all that's associated with your office for doing what you're doing for the county of Suri. Are there any other comments or questions for Mr. Phelps at this time from our emergency services?
This is Judy Little. Mr. Phelps, thank you so much because one time there I thought, oh my gosh, Suri's not going to get the vaccines in Suri. So I appreciate all that you've done, you and Melissa and the emergency department, in getting those vaccines to Suri, even though we may have to wait. I will say that, you know, other places have been accepting Suri citizens. So, you know, if you're anxious and you can get it somewhere else, you have no problem with that, do you, Mr. Phelps?
No, I have no problem if you can find it someplace else. No, ma'am, I don't.
And the other question or something that the citizens may want to know is, once they call your number and register, they just wait until they receive an answer or a time that they can come and be vaccinated?
Yes, ma'am. What we have done is we've currently have a registration form online on the website where citizens of Suri County, mainly 65 or older, or from 19 to age of 64 that have a compromised health condition, they can go on and fill out that registration form. And that registration form does not register you for the actual vaccine. What that registration form does is that submits your information to us. And then what we do from emergency management is we upload that information into the Crater Health District. And then your name is put on a waiting list. Once you're on that waiting list, the Crater Health District will contact you when a vaccine, I'm sorry, when a vaccine becomes available. So I just, I just want to reiterate to everybody that that does not put, that is not registering you for a vaccination. It is putting you on a waiting list. And once you're on that waiting list, they will contact you and then instruct you via email on what steps to take.
Thank you so much. I think that clarifies things for all of us. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome.
Mr. Phelps, Tim Calhoun, and can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Phelps, just asking the question again. The, the phone number that, I know you provided your phone number. Is there any additional phone numbers that can be called to either register online or get additional information or answers out there? I know that the, I've had some calls from folks in my district that calling the health services or the Crater District area, their phone calls are not going through, meaning that no one's answering or they're not getting call back?
Yes, sir. And that, that has been a reported problem that has occurred with the Crater Health District. They're overwhelmed with phone, phone calls from seven different localities. So what we've done in Suri County, if you go on the website and, and you fill out that questionnaire or that submittal form, or you can contact emergency management, we will take your, your information directly and we'll upload that. We, we've noticed there's been a delay or a hiccup, a hiccup in the system with Crater Health District. And we, we did not want to pass that on to our citizens. So that's why we put out there on the website our own submittal form for that information. And then we in turn will upload that information for you.
And then if someone doesn't have internet, computer, or, you know, some way of getting that document for you to upload, is there, I mean, would y'all be able to assist them with that?
Yes, sir. We're, we are compiling a list now of names of individuals in this county who do not have internet access. This is a concern that we brought forth to the Crater Health District from the very beginning that we needed a phone-in component for areas that are broadband-challenged. And they're still working on rectifying that issue. But what we're doing for, for our citizens in the county is we'll take the name and the number of those individuals and we'll gain, we'll get the information that we need so that when the Crater Health District catches up to, what catches up and offers that service, then we can automatically implement those or instantly, automatically upload those numbers.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, there was a secondary way of, of getting the information out there for those who are unable to get it out, get it to you all.
They, they would have to. Mr. Calhoun, they would have to call our office direct. That is the, that's the only, that's the only plan in place right now for anybody in the county who does not have broadband.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other concerns or questions for Mr. Phelps? Thank you, Mr. Phelps. If there'll be none, board members, we will go back now to an item that we passed dealing with the performance agreement under unfinished business for the Suri County LLC. There was a question on, an item on the agreement from section number two asking for point number C, final budget attachment. And they have it now and ready to present it. I guess I'll turn this back over to Ms. Rollins or her designate.
Yes, Mr. Elliott. I am going to, before, yes, sir. So exhibit B, which shows the project budget worksheet that was accompanied that, due to the length of the hour, we would not go over in, in details what it shows. But again, here, you can But again, here, you can see this is the budget information that we had to submit to the foundation as it pertains to the county's $300,000 match, the oversea healthcare foundation funding of $300,000, and what is considered at that time when we submitted the application in kind support for a total budget of $847,876. And, Mr. Chairman, at this particular time, and I recognize that Ms. Powell's on the phone, and Ms. Powell and the legal team actually worked to put the agreement together. So I did not want to miss the opportunity for recognizing Ms. Powell and to ask her for any presentation additional on this item for the board's edification tonight. So, Ms. Powell, I did ask Mr. Harrison to come on earlier, but I did want to give you the opportunity, if it's due, Mr. Chairman, to ask Ms. Powell, since they did prepare the document to present to the board.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. You have a performance agreement before you that is between the county and the EDA and Mr. White for the establishment of a grocery store. Mr. Harrison did give a summary earlier and so I don't need to really elaborate too much on that other than to say that there is, the agreement is total for $600,000, $300,000 from the county with a matching grant of $300,000 from the oversea foundation, and it is a reimbursable grant. So Mr. White gets reimbursed once he completes the activities as outlined in the agreement and it's reviewed by the county. And the agreement is set to expire in 2023, which is pursuant to the terms of the oversea grant. There are default provisions in the event that Mr. White does not follow the obligations that are provided for in the agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have as relates to the agreement and its terms.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Are there any questions, comments from the board members at this time on the performance agreement?
This is Tim. Can you give a brief explanation for those who either don't or are not able to see it or those who don't understand what that in-kind amount represents, please?
One second, Mr. Jury. Mr. Calhoun is on with the comment or request. Continue, Mr. Calhoun.
I'm sorry, there's a 200, and it's so small on my little telephone, like a 240, almost $248,000 in-kind support. Where is that coming from? I just wanted to make like an explanation for those who may be on the telephone.
This was a question for Ms. Powell.
One second, Mr. Jury. Ms. Powell, did you get, did you get Mr. Calhoun's request?
Yes, he's asking what the in-kind support details. Is that? Um, let's see, I'm trying to pull up, look at the, sorry, excuse me, the, the, pull it up right now. But, um, so it looks like the in-kind really does call, include work that the county staff is, you know, assisting the grocery store with that looks like it's, that looks like what the main in-kind benefit qualifies for. Ms. Rollins, do you mind scrolling up just a little bit more for me? And if you have anything that you want to add, please, please do. But it looks like it's personnel from the county that is included as in-kind.
You're correct, Ms. Powell. That is technical support from staff. Obviously, we have to spend time working on the various phases of this project. So you do have that administrative technical support. And then the other portion of that in-kind would be additional dollars that basically would come from the store owner in terms of additional costs that would be associated to complete the project out. So that is the remainder of the in-kind.
It's not funds that the county, other than the support staff, is providing, the, Mr. White? I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
No, sir. The county's commitment is $300,000 in addition to the staff time.
It's really hard to hear my phone when you sit and cut me, Ms. Rollins. So I apologize. Kind of going back and forth and up and down.
That's all right, Mr. Calhoun. I'm glad you were able to still get it, sir.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. I believe Mr. Jury has a concern. Mr. Jury?
Mr. Chair, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. I can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Then I guess this, the first question is for staff. Is the $107,000 grant, how would that impact this attachment of the final budget?
Ms. Rollins, would you like me to speak to this?
Yes, Mr. Harrison. I was just coming on. But yes, sir, if you want to tackle that, the impact of the Gen An Foundation grant on this, good question.
I can, yeah. So you see there's a line item in there for a deli build-out and equipment and all of that. The Gen An Foundation did include in their letter, in their terms, the cost to cover the deli equipment, appliances, indoor bin store, displays and such. So there is a defined breakdown that's already included in the budget that the Gen An Foundation is contributing $107,000 to, sir.
And I'm sorry, this phone is getting glitchy. Can y'all still hear me?
Yes, sir.
I can hear you, sir.
I thought the, this is just me not understanding. I thought that deli items you're referring to is part of what the county's paying for.
Yes, they are contributing additional dollars towards it, $107,000 additional. They have a series of expenses that they could contribute to this project or that the funds could cover, which would include deli equipment, appliances, indoor bins, stores, displays, signage, and the grand opening expenses. That's what they have included in the $107,000.
I, I, I understand that, but so it doesn't decrease the amount we do. It increases the amount of money that Mr. White has to spend, correct?
No, it decreases the amount that he would have.
Decreases. He has to spend.
It decreases the amount he would have to spend. The more grant funds or dollars that he would get towards the project would decrease the amount that he would have to spend in terms of the slowdown.
Yes.
I, I understand that. And listen, this is just the glitches of being virtual. I, I, I understand that. I just didn't quite get it. So how much money is Mr. White having to put forth?
Well, he had to make the initial purchase of the building itself. And then, of course, the stocking of the store and point of sale. Building is $400, 450, stocking of the store, $25,000. I would say $600,000, $700,000 off time from him.
Yes.
That he's already put out on the front end.
I'm sorry, Mr. Harrison. That was just looking at the math as well. You were asking what we correct, correct, Mr. Harrison, about the amount and, and I do.
And I'm sorry. Yeah, you broke up, but that's okay.
Are there any other questions on the performance agreement? Any other concerns?
I was just, Mr. Elliott, Judy, I was looking at the total, you know, explanation here. And it says total project expenses, $847,875.74. So I imagine that what, we have not, or the $600,000 and the $107,000. If you subtract that, you find out how much Mr. White has, you know, has to put in, I guess, is what I'm looking at.
Yes, Ms. Little, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Little. Mr. Jury, I think you had a question from Ms. Powell. Am I correct? Can you hear me, Mr. Jury? Are you there, Mr. Jury?
Can y'all hear me now? It's very, very, very glitchy for some reason.
Yes, sir. We can hear you now. You're supposed to have real broadband. We're supposed to be able to hear you.
Well, well, we'll get to that at board member comments. Let's just say that. It's not working real well here today. So anyway, Ms. Powell, can you hear me? Ms. Powell?
Yes, sir.
A question for you is that this, this agreement is not with Mr. White personally. It's with his LLC, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And so the, I've got a concern in the default clause. It says the grantee, which is the LLC, shall, if he vacates for four, 10 years, shall owe the authority appropriated amount. If he does, if he does default, how do we enforce it?
Mr. Jury, I'm sorry. I'm having difficulty hearing you. Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Powell. His question was if, if Mr. White defaults, how do we hold him responsible?
If the LLC defaults, can he enforce it? Agreement.
How will we enforce him repaying the money at that point? I think if the, if the repayments aren't paid back voluntarily, if there is a default, then I'm not sure there's another way to collect it aside from litigation. Is that, does that answer your question or are you asking how we're getting it from the LLC as opposed to him individually?
No, I'm, I'm just concerned that we don't have a strong enough default clause such as, such as a promissory note and a deed of trust.
No, that's, that's, you're right. That is not included. If that's something that the board would like to see, we can, we can go back and rewrite it and bring it back to the board for approval, if that's what you're looking for. We can do that.
Mr. White's not on tonight, is he?
I don't believe he is. And a few questions, a few, this is David speaking. A few questions, I guess, for Danielle and yourself, Mr. Jury. Number one, this was drafted, of course, this is a grant program. So my first question is, we did our guidelines in accordance with overseas and that's where we got the 10-year clawback. So are we going back to oversea or do we need to go back to oversea to ask them about this as well in terms of they would not let us expend any more stringent, yes, clawbacks on him because they said that they are a foundation and this is a matching award to a foundation? So are there any implications with oversea as it pertains to your request? And secondly, if you are proposing to add a deed of trust, would that, could we, is that negotiable in terms of with oversea to remove the 10 years and just use the deed of trust as the clawback? Are you open to that or do you have a preference or how would that work?
I, I'm not privy to what oversea is requiring. I was just trying to protect the taxpayers' money, not overseas. Because I understand we are matching grant and I, I, I don't know what overseas guidelines are.
So, yeah, so my question is, so one of their guidelines, Mr. Jury, is 10, 10 years. The store would have to remain in existence for 10 years. So my question is, are you all right with, if oversea consents to, to be a little bit lenient on the 10 years and substitute it with the proposed deed of trust if they agree to that?
I'm not quite following you, but if a deed of trust, I would just, and I'll just say, as in other localities that I've assisted, when we put, when we use grant funds and matching grants, the taxpayer money was, was protected by a lien on the real estate so that if the LLC files bankruptcy, the county would, would get that, would have a potential to get that money back.
Yeah. So, and that's fine. And I understand that clearly. And so my question is, are you all right with swapping out the 10 years for the lien on the property? That's my question.
Yeah, but it's kind of the same. In other words, what I would propose was that there would be a promissory note for 10 years, or whatever the county wants, five or 10 years, whatever it is, and that at the end of the term, if he's still there, the deed of trust and the note goes away. So it's kind of the same.
Okay, okay.
Does that, does that make sense?
I get, I get, I get what you're saying. Yes, sir.
And Mr. White hasn't been approached about this, has he?
Yes, actually, we've spoken to him. He consented to what's agreed already and was ready to go forth with that. So if you're proposing this, we would have to go back to him and see if he consents to what you're proposing.
Yeah, I, I just, understandably, he would consent to this because there's no, this is just, there's no way to enforce it against him other than through litigation, which we probably wouldn't do.
Right, okay. I see what you're saying. So you're saying to put the deed of trust on to the 10-year stipulation?
Yes.
Okay.
Or he can personally guarantee it.
Okay.
But right now, right now, he can file bankruptcy on the LLC and just walk away.
Right. I see what you're saying. Yes, sir. So, and thank you, Mr. Jury. So at this time, we will, we will table the performance agreement until the agreement can be established between legal representation and Mr. White. So this item will be tabled. Hopefully, we can have it prepared by March meeting. We will go now to our public comments. If you are with us tonight and you're a member of the community, we ask that you will state your name and you have three minutes to address the board. Any public comments?
My name is Joseph Maddox, a resident of Denver.
Yes, Mr. Powell.
First, let me say to Deputy Hill, to thank him for his service and protection to our community and my family. Godspeed to him and his family and his retirement. Let me continue by thanking board member Michael Drury, county administrator Melissa Rollins, and deputy administrator David Harrison for their actions and proactive actions of handling my concerns. I'm going to share a brief summary. Nothing is quote, it's just a summary of my concern. I inquired for codes and compliance information from the building inspections office. I asked to speak to Stacy Williams concerning this request. After more than a month of no contact back from Mr. Williams or his office, I contacted Mrs. Rollins and made her aware of my concerns of not receiving communication back from the office of building inspections. I received a call back from Mr. Williams not long after and he immediately raised his voice. He became very disrespectful to me that I would not be able to obtain the requested information without submitting an application. And while continuing to raise his voice, he also told me that disinformation was not available anywhere in any form in the county but his office. I again asked him to calm down and speak to me with respect or I could just call the county administrator's office and his reply was, do you want the number? I spoke back with Ms. Rollins following the incident and she informed me she would address the situation. Not long after, I received a call from deputy county administrator David Harrison. And within a 15-minute phone call, he made me aware of the proper county office that would handle my inquiry. that would handle my inquiry. He explained it all in detail. Within ten minutes of that phone call's completion, he also provided me with a detailed email of all discussed information and the proper links for the county's codes on the county's website. I also had a follow-up call from Ms. Rawlins and an email, which I'd like to share with the board. Mr. Maddox, good afternoon. With the pleasure of speaking with you recently, although this was to address a matter of concern with your conversation with a county employee. I am pleased that you were able to receive the information from Mr. Harrison, responsible for planning community development matters in a timely, business-friendly, and professional manner. As stated during our call, I sincerely apologize for the response of Mr. Williams to your inquiry. I have spoken with the employee on this matter, and coaching has been given regarding responding to requests from citizens or stakeholders seeking information from county staff. If requests for the land development zoning ordinance had been passed along to the proper department, your experience with the county would not have been an unpleasant one. We pride ourselves on being as responsive as we can to professional manner, and I appreciate your positive comments regarding Mr. Harrison's response. So to conclude my statement and my concern this evening, I'd like to share this. This county is my home. We were raised here. We raised our children here, and now we're grandparents here. This county deserves individuals that represent the county offices to be of utmost character and hold a high level of integrity, which I have witnessed from the County Administrator's office and my district's representative. Some may think that I have taken it too far to bring it to the board's attention, but I say to those who may feel this way, I love my home and this community. And when you love something, you're loyal to it, you cherish it, and you protect it. In my opinion, the behavior that I experienced from Mr. Williams, no other resident should have to experience. We, as residents, depend on the trust of our local government in times of need, when it's needed, when trying to accomplish a project on our property. And when you're also being diligent and trying to obey the law. To the Board of Supervisors, I thank you for your time this evening, hearing my concerns. I trust that all will be handled well.
Thank you, Ms. Maddox. Thank you for your concern and sharing that with the board. And we we trust staff has rectified the situation and that we'll move forward as a community working together. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Elliott, one last thing. I apologize for speaking out of order during your meeting. It is my first board meeting, and I ask for your grace. But I will be a
Yes, sir.
future, future attendant from here moving forward. Thank you to all.
Thank you, sir. No problem at all. Are there any other comments from concerned citizens?
Susan from Spring Grove. Susan Corvello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now, Ms. Corvello.
With two or more of the solar plants proposing to come into our county, I would like to know if the board is ready to give up large areas of agricultural land again. Since we have solar plants already in operation, some definite numbers should be relayed to the public. I personally feel like the county is not taking into consideration your citizens and the effect it'll have on them with traffic, farming, home appraisals, and disposal of the solar panels at the end of life. There's much discussion on where they will end up and how they will be taken there. And I'm curious if anyone has found information from solar plants that has run its course and what effects are on the land. We keep hearing that the companies will put the land back to how the homeowners want it. But do we really know if anything will grow after thirty-five years of solar panels on them? My questions would be, how much does the county receive from Dominion Power in the taxes? And how much land is associated with Dominion? How much land was purchased or leased by Strata Solar? And how much did we receive from them last year? How much did we receive from the citizens that originally owned that property? And how much will Strata decrease over the years in the county income? After watching how these solar plants are operating while putting up their plants, I would also like to know who from our county is monitoring their projects and making sure that they're abiding by what they agreed to. I surely can see the solar panels on Route Ten in the summer and winter. Is there a requirement for a border to screen views of the panels for the roads and neighboring properties? There's several areas in this area that you can just ride past and you see the solar panels with no barriers. Before agreeing to the rezoning large tracts of land solely for the purpose of one business that proposes to be temporary, the county should understand all the pros and cons and place a high value on your community that it impacts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corvello. We thank you for your concerns with the solar panel. The board is not prepared to answer your questions tonight, but I'm sure if you address those to the Planning Commission, you can get the answers that you need. And the board does appreciate your concerns about the solar projects coming to the county. Thank you so much. Are there any other other comments from our citizens at this time?
Hello, Reverend Elliott, this is Diane Cheek, Surrey District.
Yes, Diane Cheek.
I was very happy to hear the report tonight from the Davenport Company. I believe it is a wake-up call for our county. And yes, as Ms. Rawlins says, it's timely. It's maybe overdue. Our county is in a risky position of having just two primary concentrated, as the gentleman said, tax revenue areas. You know, the backs of our citizens, the real estate tax, we all know about that, and then the power plant. So I believe we must really take time to understand the message that this report delivers and the prudent financial steps that must be taken. You know, this is not, hey, we're going to just consider this. This information that was delivered to us tonight was very good, and we really, as a county, must take action so that we will be financially stable for the future. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Cheek. Any other concerns or comments from the citizens? If there be no other public comments, floor is now open for comments from board members. I know Mr. Drury say he want to talk to us about real broadband.
Chairman, Chairman Elliott, then I'll start it off with you. And sorry about the glitchiness of my cellphone here. But but anyway, so I'll start off with that one first, if y'all can hear me.
We can hear you, sir.
Yes, I I I'm really grateful to Prince George Electric for bringing and continuing to bring broadband to Surrey County. I do have a a recent concern as a citizen and a board member. I have had some problems with broadband here and recently. And and so I had an experience, and it has not been resolved yet. But that's that's my issue, and I can handle it. What was concerning for me is that when Prince George Electric first brought this project to the board, I heard that there would be support staff here and local hiring and so forth. And through this process of trying to resolve an issue, I'm calling Georgia. And it is very bureaucratic. And recently, just learned through this process that Ms. Chaplin and the public relations staff and the marketing staff at Prince George Electric have been let go. So I just have concerns about that and something I think that we ought to address with Prince George Electric. They have a new head, what now when the project began. They are outsourcing, seems like they could have some some staff from good old Surrey County help them out with this. But anyway, I just think we shouldn't ignore it. And I I'm glad it happened to me, because if it happened to a citizen, I would assume that I would get a a phone call. So so anyway, so just a a forewarning, we probably should address it with them. I have Prince George Electric speak to the board about where they at, since since there's a new head. So so, yes, and it's got me glitchy cellphone tonight. The other comment I wanted to make was to Mr. Maddox, if he's online, I I do appreciate the manner that he has addressed this issue and for him getting in touch with me. And and all citizens should be be okay with contacting us if they've got issues, because I really appreciate knowing it. And again, thanks to him and thanks to staff for assisting him with his issue. He was very kind and complimentary about that. The other thing is, is that I've gotten a couple of phone calls from the Carsley District since Mr. Holmes is ailing, and we all pray for his recovery and 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 often thank him during his illness. When I first got on the board, I had I had an issue that I had to be at for a while. And and I'm just going to say it's to the citizens from Carsley. I know Reverend Elliott and you and I have spoken, and we're more than glad, and I am, to to take calls from Carsley District was from citizens. And I'm sure that probably there are other board members that feel the same way, but they're not left at the hanging. We can cover Mr. Holmes if need be. The last thing I will say is with the budget, as we look into what we need to do, we certainly going to have to take in consideration what was presented tonight. But I also would like us to look at, Surrey County has an exemption on property taxes for elderly and handicapped people. I think we ought to take a look at that again as we try to increase the revenue into the county. Is there a way to, let me back up. The Virginia Code allows lots of flexibility in real estate taxation for people sixty-five and older, and would hope that we would look at that during the budget process. And and thanks, thanks for the time. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Drury, for your concerns. Thank you so very much for all that you do. Any other board members? If there be no other board members or board comments, we will now entertain our county administrator's report. Ms. Rawlins.
Yes, good evening again, members of the board and members of the committee. The hour is late, so I promise I won't be before you, be before you long. We have been doing our very best to continue to serve the citizens of Surrey and keeping our employees safe and our visitors safe during the pandemic. Has this COVID- nineteen, all the vaccination rollout efforts that are underway impacting staff? Yes, it is, but we are very blessed that we are doing very well. And I think staff is doing an excellent job managing all. Obviously, the vaccination rollout process has created a lot of questions for the community residents who are seeking clarity on the process. And I'm glad that Mr. Fels in his report was able to share and clarify some of the questions that you all had. The need for information has resulted again in many calls per day, not just to our local government staff, but also to the Virginia Department of Health and also our local health department in Surrey County. I do want to share with you that there is information relating to the release that I I sent out in the Board of Supervisors communication. It is a press release that speaks to some of the questions that were raised regarding what we are doing in terms of knowing that our citizens don't necessarily have access all of it to broadband and how we are planning on meeting those challenges. One of the things that the Crater Health District is diligently working on, and that is a a call center. Now, I can tell you that we was not going to mention this until such time. Right before this meeting, I received a communication from the Crater Health District in the fact that they are definitely working on and hope to have the numbers for a call center up and running. Now, the call center would be able to assist our Surrey County citizens in being able to have another avenue whereby they be able to reach the Crater Health District or to be able to receive questions and also to be able to be assisted in putting their names on the waiting list for the vaccine. Now, in Surrey, I can say that Mr. Fels and in the team, we was working with our own individual call center here in the county. But in terms of trying to provide solutions to the health district, in addition to sharing all the concerns that our citizens has talked about, in addition to the concerns that we have, we shared those concerns with the health districts. But we also had to realize we had to be very proactive in in assisting them because, again, this is everybody's problem. So we had to find solutions to help overcome these problems. So one of the things that a member of the jurisdiction in the Crater Health District did was to come up with a joint call center. Now, this year's information with the Board of Supervisors and that Surrey County phone calls will be handled by Prince George County. And I can tell you, board members, and I know I sent the information to you all, but we are very grateful for the support of Prince George County. Denver County has been hosting numerous of calls for all the counties in the health district, and we are very grateful for them taking the lead and taking the charge and doing that. But Surrey calls, as I stated, will be routed to Prince George County. They are handling both Sussex and Surrey's calls. And again, I just want everyone to know on the call, if you're looking for further information as it pertains to that. Now, I'm very, I was very careful in sharing this tonight, but the only reason why I did again is because we just received this information right before this call, so I was able to share it. Because, again, you know that we cannot be in front of overpromising and undelivering things that come from the Crater Health District. It's okay for me to to let our citizens know that that call center is being formalized so that we can have an avenue whereby we can get some assistance right away. And there's a live board that's going to be on the other line. Of course, the vaccine rollout process, which has definitely taken a lot of our time over the last couple of weeks, you have heard the various staff reports tonight, so you can tell that we are very busy. The only other thing that I will share is you do have information that's inside your agenda material tonight. I do want to tell that you all know that we are grant seekers here in Surrey County, and I would be remiss if I did not share and I advise Ms. Vargo, an animal control officer, that I will share publicly that they was able to receive a $10,000 donation to the Surrey County Animal Shelter to be used for improved this infrastructure-wise at the animal pound. Said that the project in which we were looking to do for replacing of the poor, because we are getting these leveraging these rent laws, we are able to reduce the county's commitment. So we are very pleased with the donation to the Surrey County Animal Shelter. Prince George Electric Co-op, or Mr. Drury did mention that a little bit tonight. We do have our monthly meetings with Prince George Electric Co-op, and we ask them a couple of different questions. And those questions pertain to whether or not the project is on schedule, the number of homes that the project has reached at this point, the number of homes that have been connected. We do have approximately 625 homes that have been connected with Prince George Electric. And Mr. Drury has said we would more than happen to again share that concern with Prince George Electric Co-op team as we continue to dialogue with them throughout the course of this project. And we are looking again to have, as we stated in a previous meeting, the communication session or the telecommunications forum whereby citizens and you board members can have those conversations and be able to ask questions of the Prince George Electric Co-op staff. And we're looking to have that over the next couple of weeks, as Mr. Brown reported. Because of the sake of time, I would not go over some other things, but you all know we're still busy in the council. We have a lot of projects going on. And as pertains to the roof project update, obviously, COVID- nineteen impacted that project. We was hoping definitely to have it done by now, but the project is taking place as they have been working yesterday and today. And hopefully, next couple of days, to be able to get our roof project completed, depending the weather. And that will conclude my report on the board members. We do thank the citizens for being patient with us as we begin to really continue to handle a lot in the wake of the pandemic. We are still trying to serve the best service to the citizens of the county. So thank you all so very much.
Excuse me, I was muted. Thank you, Ms. Rawlins, for your report. And the other items that we have on our agenda tonight is for our information. But I want the board members to look at the last item, number six, from Prince George Electric Co-op Living Magazine. It is featuring our very own county administrator. It is a very nice article and highlighting Mrs. Rawlins. Whenever she's highlighted and doing well, it speaks well for us as a county. So kudos to our county administrator. Also, you have a press release from the governor on regards to Black History Month and COVID- nineteen response. And Commissioner Reverend, Reverend New Food and Commissioner's revenue food drive, and these are informational items only. There are no other items on our agenda that draws our attention tonight. The chair would entertain a motion for adjournment until March the 4th of 2021 at 7:00 for our board meeting. Is there a motion for adjournment, fellow board members?
Motion. No movement, Mr. Elliott.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Whatever rule call for adjournment from Mrs. Chaplin.
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is carried, you all stay safe out there, COVID is still very real. Be safe out there and take all necessary precautions. Look forward to seeing you on our March 4th meeting, God bless you, good night.
Good night, same to you.